Fifty one and today we're in verse ten, in verse ten we pushed across the mandate of a clean heart. And we were reading, now this, this verse tends to get overly emotional, let's, let's remove all the emotion, let's hone in on the actual context to the scripture, the actual context to the scripture teaches us that God is literally looking at the intention of the heart. And this is where God begins his judgment, his God, God begins his judgment at the intention of the heart. So David here says, create in me a clean heart, oh God, and renew a right spirit within me. The spiritual, the spirit, the spirit element speaks to the influence, creating me a clean heart. Because this is generally what spirits do, spirits have got the capacity to influence a person. Spirits have got the capacity, in fact, they've got the mandate to influence a person, their basic uh operating system is based on influence. You're going to find whenever your spirit is around or whenever there's spirits around, there's influence that is exacted, there's influence that is pronounced, there's influence that is now being propagated, there's influence that's now being voiced out. The influence of the devil or the influence of wicked spirits is so that you are not upright. So David here is making a man, is making a plea to God, asking for the Lord to allow for him to have a right spirit now, let me, let me push right spirit uh hand in hand with clean heart, so you can see that this is not the same thing. Uh, clean heart versus right spirit, clean heart versus right spirit. Clean heart versus right spirit, let's go. So a, a right spirit is an influence from God. Meanwhile, a clean heart is the intention that you carry. So the intention that you carry is going to be influenced by the spirit that influences you. A clean heart is influenced heavily by the spirit that the person carries. Watch, watch very closely, see very closely the people that are around you very closely, look very, very attentively at the people that are around you. Pay very close attention, you will soon find that the spirit that they carry or rather the influence that they exact has got the potential to deter your heart from the things of God. Has got the potential to make your heart feel pain, has got the potential to make you feel in certain ways, simply because of the influence that they exact. Simply because of the influence that they have, this is done because of the spirit that they move around with. The people children of God that carry in them a wicked spirit. And so their wicked spirit wherever they are will be seen in the things that they do and the things that they influence around them. I'll repeat that thing again, clean heart versus right spirit. Clean heart versus a right spirit, these are not the same thing. A clean heart is different to a right spirit, a right spirit influences a clean heart. A right spirit causes a clean heart to act in a way that the light, that, that, that the clean heart remains or comes to a position of holiness, that's what the spirit does. The heart can be clean, but when an influence comes, a heart can be removed from cleanliness into iniquity or into sin. A heart can be influenced into iniquity or into sin, I show you. When an influence comes that says you're not good enough, you find that that heart is now broken. When it is broken, it begins to do things that cause the heart not to be productive. That caused the heart not to be able to carry vision. Remember, remember I told you yesterday that a heart that is clean is fertile ground to carry harvest. A heart that is clean is fertile ground to be able to see tomorrow. However, a heart that is not clean, a heart that is carrying sin, a heart that is carrying iniquity struggles to see further. Struggles to see the future and so their hunger is for being able to feed themselves now. They do everything to try to satisfy their tummies now. Did you know that a clean heart can see into tomorrow and therefore everything a cleaner is gonna be doing is going to be, is going to be on the basis of tomorrow, this is now being prophetic, this has been a visionary. This is now being a visionary, this is now calling the, carrying the ability to be able to see tomorrow. A clean heart, a clean heart children of God is very important. Hand in hand with a clean heart is a right spirit, hand in hand with a clean heart is a right spirit. Remember I said yesterday that it is important children of God for us to measure what is given to us, not on the basis on how big the gift is. We don't measure the God that is blessing us on the place, on the basis of how big the gift is. It's not how big the gift is that how big our God is. English escapes me there for a second, but you get what I'm saying, it's not how great the gift is, how great our God is, no, 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 no. It's whether your heart was clean, then you're going to know that it's a gift of God. Otherwise, you my dear brother, you my dear sister are being sponsored by a wicked heart. So that you, you grow, you go further and further and further and further away from the things of God. Our granny used to say, there is no growth in the comfort zone. So the devil wants you to remain in a place where you feel like you are okay, you look like you're okay. It sounds like you are okay, but child of God, I put it to you and say that you're not okay. Because you've got no connection to your heart. The reason you've got no connection to your heart is because you cannot identify the posture of your heart, hence comes in a right spirit. A right spirit will give you the ability to be accountable to God for the things that you do. You say, oh, God forgive me and it's okay, you move on. Oh, God, renew a right spirit within me, a right spirit will tell you that what you do is wrong. A right spirit will tell you about what is not right, a right spirit is, 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 is God's way of assisting you in knowing where to go to. When you do not have a right spirit, it's difficult to navigate life, it's very, very difficult. It's hard to know what God is saying, very, very hard, very, very, very hard without a right spirit. A right spirit is a good helper for a clean heart. A right spirit is a very good helper for a clean heart, very, very good helper. Did you know that people with wicked spirits, people with evil spirits do wrong things? This is elementary children of God, did you know, people with evil spirits, they do wrong with much is, they, they do wrong without blinking an eye. They, they've got, they've got no issues with offending people, they've got no issues with hurting people, that's not an issue. Let's just get what we want, right, let's get what we're looking for. Let's forget about others, others don't matter, right, others don't mean anything. So long as I get what I want, that's a wicked spirit. A wicked spirit does not consider, does not look at what is clean. A wicked, a wicked spirit only considers what is good for them. Is somebody with me this evening, are we together children of God, I hope we're together. Praise God, praise God, so it's very easy to know, it's very, very easy to know, do you have a clean heart where you are? Do you have, and, and you, you re- remember what God tells David, do you remember what God tells so, so, someone rather? He's not looking at the outer word apparel. When God is measuring our currency before him, God is not looking on the outside, he's not looking at how pretty you are. God isn't interested in whether you've got blonde hair or whether you've got black hair, them dreads, that's your, that do you. God is interested on the inner white part. The, 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 how you look when you go to church honestly is, is, is zero compared to what God is really, really looking at. God is looking at the inside, at the inside and not at the outside. If it was the outside, I would, I wouldn't be one of the, I wouldn't be one of the best looking people, the other better looking people than me, isn't it? And so God will choose them, but by grace, God doesn't measure the outside. God looks at the inside, that's the measurement of God, and so you need a clean heart. Don't be fooled, God is not mocked, God cannot be mocked, God will not be mocked. God sees in the darkness, God sees the things that are hidden, God sees the things that men do not see. When you go to sleep, God saw everything that you did in the daytime. When you did not tell the truth, when you, when you bared false witness, when you're part of some, God saw, God sees and saw the seed that you planted, who the Bible says, don't be fooled, God is not mocked, as men saw it, even so shall he reap. So we reap on the basis of our sowing, what are you sowing child of God? What is it, what is this thing that you put in the ground? What is this thing that you put in the ground? What is this thing that you plant in the ground? And so it is important for us to carry a right spirit. A right spirit, a right spirit is so important. It's not to be messed around with, a right spirit will show you what is wrong. Now on Sunday, I'm, 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 I'm still pushing the gifts of the spirit and I'm needing for us, for, for, for you to be, for you to partner well with that teaching. You're going to need to make sure that this, that this becomes a mandate to you, that God crea- creating me a clean heart. Creating me, and this is easy, I said yesterday in John seven, if you're not writing, write it down, John seventeen seventeen, that's gonna help us much. John seventeen seventeen will give us, eh, will give us a standard of how God cleanses us. Sanctify us through your truth, your word is truth. Sanctify us through your truth, oh God, your word is truth. Sanctify us, oh God, through your truth, your word is truth. Sanctify us, oh God, through your truth, your word is truth, the word of God is truth. The word of God is truth, the word of God is truth, your word is truth. Your word is truth, so when the word of God comes, the word of God now has got a mandate of causing for us to be sanctified by the truth. This means that he brings cleanliness into us, this means that he begins to remove all things that are not right within inside of us. This means that he begins to bring his wisdom within inside of us, that wisdom, that cleanliness are things that we require for a clean heart. These are things that assist us with a clean heart, they're things that give us, that give us mileage in the things of the spirit. Now to gain mileage in the things of the spirit, you are looking to be cleansed. In the things of, for you to gain, for you to gain much movement in the things of God, you're gonna lose a lot of momentum if your heart is not clean. You can lose a lot of momentum if your spirit is not right, if your spirit is, if you've got a selfish spirit. Self, let me talk, let me talk about selfish people for a second, if you wanna gain, 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 gain. You're gonna find that that's not a right spirit, and so because of the need to gain, you'll do anything, that spirit of, that, that, that spirit of selfishness will begin to influence you to do anything to gain, whatever you can get for free, whatever you can get for cheap, whatever you can get done. That's the, it's a wicked spirit, it will cause you to lose value, very wicked spirit, the spirit of lying, you struggle to tell the truth. Struggle much, you struggle much because there's an influence, an influence that refuses for you to be right. An influence that insists that you are wrong. Is somebody with me, I hope we're together. Okay, I'm, let, let, let's, let's advance it a bit more, since I, I think, I think I would have sat on a right spirit a little bit more, then I'll move on, what's my time, because I don't want a time, I don't want my time to escape me today. Okay, I've got a bit, okay, I've got a bit of time for right spirit, so a ri- a right spirit is, sorry. Thank you, a right spirit is important, a right spirit is very important. Make sure that you are influenced by the right spirit. Hmm, them that are led of the spirit of God are the sons of God, you are the son spiritual of whoever who leads you. You are the slave to the spirit that leads you, you are the slave to the spirit that leads you. And so this is why in Genesis chapter two verse seven, you find that God breathes his spirit into Adam. He breathes his breath and then the Bible tells us that Adam became a living thing, Adam began to live by the influence of the breath of God. The moment they began to listen to a different spirit, the moment they began to listen to the serpent in the garden. It was now found children of God that they, they were no longer under the influence of the one who reigns forever. Amen, they will now find themselves under a different, under, under a different influence. And so they saw what was good as wrong, this is what another spirit does, whenever another spirit comes in, it begins to show you what God was saying, it's too long, it's a long direction, it's a long, it's a long direction, you don't have time, you don't have time. You are in trouble now, you need a way out, you need, you need another answer. And so that influence begins to influence you against what is right to go the wrong path. I hope you're with me all, I hope somebody's with me this evening, please flow, please flow with me. So it is important that we find, that we find ourselves under the influence of God. After the, after the serpent came, the serpent began to say, look, look, look Mama Eve, check over there, Mama Eve, look, look carefully, look carefully Mama Eve. Mama Eve looked, hmm, Mama Eve knew that her, that God had said, do not eat of the tree of knowledge and good and evil. Do not eat of that tree, hmm, hmm, don't eat of that tree. But when the serpent came, the serpent said, no, 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 look at this thing, it's good to be ate. In fact, it will give you knowledge, meanwhile, there was already knowledge that was deposited inside of them. Knowledge that was gonna give them life, right next to that tree, right next to that tree was a tree called the tree of life. That tree was gonna cause them to eat to live forever, should they have eaten of that tree. But the devil is not interested in something that is long term. The devil is not interested in how long, the devil is only interested in you gaining what you need when right now. And so because he does not have the ability to be a visionary, he closes your eyes so that you do not see what the Lord would have you see, the influence of the spirit is so that you can see even what is yet to happen tomorrow. This is now what John thirteen verse sixteen, sixteen verse thirteen says, we are taught very well there that the spirit of God will come and will guide you in all truth, he will show you things that are to come. The spirit of God has got the ability to influence you so that tomorrow you, tomorrow you're able to arrive into, into what you are supposed to arrive to, so that you're not mistaken by the here and now. Remember now, faith comes by hearing and hearing of the word of God, but because we lack sight. Sight in the spirit, sight in the things of God, ah, the truth of God now begin to struggle. Hmm, they now begin to struggle with the wisdom of God. And so the wisdom of God becomes their enemy, as I'm teaching now, somebody's feeling like they're being beaten, they're being beaten, like some. It's because of the influence of a spirit, there's a spirit, now these two kingdoms them the work against each other. They never work hand in hand, John one verse five, the, the light shined in the darkness and the darkness comprehended it not. And so the light and the darkness never ever intermingled, you can't have a gray area in between God and another spirit. There is no, there is no gray area, there's a thick separation, you're gonna feel it in the pits of your soul. You feel it in the bottom of your heart that you have now moved away from the things of God, you're going to know, you're going to, trust me, it's, it's, it's no mistake. When she looked at it, she began to see what God had said, remember she was told that this thing that you eat of will cause for you not to be alive anymore, do not eat of this tree, the day you eat of this tree, you shall surely die. And so the woman and the husband began to eat of the tree. The Bible says that when they saw that thing, she said it was good to be ate, the Bible says when she looked at it, she saw it as good to eat. This would mean that what God said was death became life to them, they began to say that what was meant to kill them was actually good for them. The devil has got the ability to make something that is, something that is bound to make you, to make you cursed. To make you lose things look good, he'll make something terrible look good. Be careful of the influence of the spirit, have within inside of you a right spirit. I hope somebody's now trotting with me, are we moving together, are we at the right pace, I hope we're still together. A right spirit is very important. Okay, so a, a rights, a right spirit will assist you. The right spirit will assist you to remain within the, no matter, child of God, it might, it might, it might take a day. It might take two days, it might take three days, it might take four days. It might take five days, but trees never grow overnight, trees don't go overnight. Trees don't take, don't take two minutes to come, no, 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 trees take time. Because God has got a plan for that tree. And so will remain rooted, so that God might have his way in you and in me. I pray that God would have his way in you, so that you do not, you, you, I, I, I've talked to you about weed science, I'll repeat the science again of weed. Weed science is a very dangerous science, weed, ah, weed is a very dangerous science. Weed gets excited, this is the, this is the thing about weed, weed gets excited, every time it rains, you see weed, 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 weed weed will jump out of the ground, begin to grow, ruin people's lawns, now there's weed all over the place. Simply because it rained, simply because it rained. And so, if you are not wise, if you, if, if you are a seed that wants to be weed, you're gonna see the weed come out and you look at the weed and you begin to admire or cooler, you look at the weed and think, hmm, look at how fast they have come up, look at what's happening over there. Right, meanwhile, it's only weed, nobody likes weed in any case, weed is temporal, as soon as the rain goes away, that thing is gonna be cut down, right, it ruins the lawn. Unlike a tree, a tree does not get excited because of the rain. A tree remains rooted, its source is far below the ground. The source of a tree is far below the ground, the source of the tree is not, is, 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 is not lofty in the air. So choose to be rooted, choose to be rooted, how do we get rooted? A clean heart and a right spirit, how would you get rooted? With a clean heart and a right spirit, it's important children of God that your heart must be clean before the God that you pray to. Very important, that your heart must be clean before the God that you pray to, how can you pray to God knowing what you did? How can you ask God for things knowing what you are doing, ask for forgiveness from God so that you might have a clean heart before him, the one that sees the heart, you can't lie to God. Clean heart, upright spirit, clean heart, upright spirit, a right spirit within inside of us. I'm ready to move now, are we ready to move to the next verse, I'm ready to push. Okay, praise God. Amen, amen, I'm trying to honor my promises too, I'm really pushing. Um, verse eleven, very important, verse eleven causes for us to have, to have sufficiency now. It causes, it's, verse, verse eleven is a verse that appeals to the grace of the Lord, it says, cast me not away from your presence and take not your Holy Spirit away from me, very, very important line. Cast me, do not remove me from your presence, to be cast away is to be thrown away from the presence of God, to be discarded away. Now look, look at what sin does, sin arises the potential for somebody to be removed from the presence of the Lord God. When you're away from the presence of the Lord God, in whose presence are you? In whose presence are you, cast me not away from the, from your presence, do not remove me from where you are. Do not remove me, there's an advantage to being in the presence of the Lord. And a very strong disadvantage from being away from the presence of the, very strong disadvantage, I'll start with the advantage. The advantage of being in the presence of the Lord is that it takes us back to that verse that we started off with yesterday, verse nine. Hide, hide your face away from my sins, you are very aware that God is looking at you, when you're in the presence of God, you are, it's very advantageous. That God is always looking at you, you, when you're in the presence of God, you are very aware that every move that you make is observed of God. When you're in the presence of God, you do things for God, that right spirit now begins to get activated, now you are aware of the presence that works with you. You now know that God is on my side, you know that nothing can be against you, you know that no weapon formed like if, if, there's certain informations that are attributed to being in the presence of the Lord God. Cast me not away from your presence, when you're in the presence of God, there's a mandate that happens by the reason of you being in the presence of God. You find that everything that's within the presence of God within your reach becomes yours by being in the presence of the Lord God. Did you know, I said yesterday, if you're not out there watching these wicked channels, you are here today in Bible study. Right, praise the Lord for that, bless his holy name, but if you're not within the Bible study, if you're not here within Bible study, the other places you're gonna find yourself. Find yourself on TikTok, right, having that thirty second thing, thirty second clips and whatnot, right, find yourself on whatever and have, you find yourself doing whatever and all those other things. And, and this, ah, this, those things will now have an influence over you, there's that verse ten, a right spirit. And to begin to affect your heart whether, whether positively or negatively, there is that first part of verse ten, a clean heart, right? Cast me not away from your presence and take not your Holy Spirit away from me, the presence of the Lord God is you having God in close proximity. Is you having God, is you having a God that you can call on, is you having a God that you can speak with. Cast me not away from your presence, oh God, cast me not away from your presence, oh God. May you not be cast away from the presence of God because of your inner white parts, make sure that the inner white parts remain clean. They remain under the influence of a right spirit, cast not, cast me not out from presence of God and take not your Holy Spirit away from me now, this is something, this is something that I do not want, this is a personal thing that I feel is very important for me, that the Lord should never ever take away his Holy Spirit away from me. The Holy Spirit is so important to me, the Holy Spirit is very, very important. May God never take his Holy Spirit away from you, may you become so sensitive that you know that the Holy Spirit is always with you. May you never lose your cool so much, you do not consider the Holy Spirit. You know, the Holy Spirit helps me so much, the Holy Spirit is my helper, he, he helps me shut my mouth, I've learned to I've learned not to answer certain things, the Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit is very important children of God. The Holy Spirit gives me an advantage, the Holy Spirit is so important, may the Holy Spirit help you. I pray that the Holy Spirit would assist each and every one of you, me, the Holy Spirit, the Bible teaches us, he guides us in all truth. Did you know that in the absence of the spirit of the Lord, we struggle to understand the word? In the absence of the Holy Spirit, you're gonna find that this is a bunch of English that makes no sense whatsoever. Meanwhile, in Isaiah eleven and verse two, we find that there's such a thing as a spirit of understanding. So when you would struggle, when it to be hard, because the spirit of God is there, you find that there is understanding. You begin to understand the word of God, it finds a place within side of your heart. If there's no place to be found inside of you, there's a problem with a clean heart, there's a problem with the upright spirit and there's a problem with the presence that you're in. This would mean that the Holy Spirit is not where you are, make sure that the Holy Spirit is never taken away from you, very important. Cast me not away from your presence, oh God, cast me not away from your presence of God. Cast me not away from your presence, oh God, and take not your Holy Spirit away from me. Take not your Holy Spirit away from me, take not your Holy Spirit, very, very important, the spirit of God is very, very important. Remember I taught you that the Holy Spirit guides us in all truth. The Holy Spirit helps us by guiding us in all truth. Like I said, the Holy Spirit is so important to me that I honor and I revere. The, the part of God that I consider for me personally more than anything is a part of the Holy Spirit. I do not want to find a day where I'm irrelevant to the spirit of God. Remember I said in Genesis chapters, Genesis chapter two verse seven, that God breathes his spirit into the life, into the mouth of Adam. Into the nose and Adam becomes a living thing, without the breath of God, I do not have purpose. Without, without the breath of God, we do not have purpose, we do not have a reason of existence. The spirit of God upholds all things, hence I've been saying, the spirit of God is not necessary, people scatter, cluttering over the place, power, power, power. Right, it's not me making fun of those people, I'm, I really am not making fun of them, with all due respect to them, right? I believe there's much more to the spirit of God than just falling down. The spirit of God does, in fact, the spirit of God does not make us fall down, you ask Samson, look at Samson very, very well. If you pay close attention to Samson, you'll find that whenever the spirit of God would come upon him, the Bible says when the enemy would come in, Samson would begin to shake, remember I told you about him, when he shaked a certain way, the spirit of the Lord God would come upon him so that he had power and might. He had strength within inside of him, Samson would not fall in the presence of the enemy, Samson would not fall amongst other men, God would raise Samson with great might to be able to face the Philistines. The reason we are weak in the presence of the enemy is because of the absence of the true spirit of God. The Bible in Daniel chapter eleven verse thirty two says, them that know their God, them they are strong and they do great exploits. Knowing your God will cause you to be strong, will give you a strength, will give you power, the devil searches for the weak. The, 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 the devil says like a, is like a lion, the Bible says like a lion roding around, seeking who he might devour. Now strength children of God is not found by title, strength is found by the spirit that influences you. Hence you need to have a right spirit within inside of you, am, am I, am I moving with somebody this evening, somebody with me, I hope you're here. I hope you're still here. And so, and so we gain strength, we gain strength child of God by reason of the spirit. Not, not, not by who's, it's not who supports, I've been saying this for a while, it's not who supports us that gives us strength. It's not who stands with us, it's God, it's God who gives us strength. And so every day he will supply breath and we're gonna wake up again, every day he will supply breath and we're gonna wake up again. And we're not just going to wake up, the more that you began, the more that you begin to reconcile the spirit to your soul is the more that you find that every day it's not just waking up, it's waking up with purpose, it's waking up with vision. It's waking up with the joy of the Lord, because his mercies are new every morning. He, his mercies are new and there's a joy that will be deposited inside of you, should you come to the presence of the spirit. And so the spirit of God is going to help you, me, the spirit of God, like I said, is my helper. And so, the Spirit of God is going to help you. Me, the Spirit of God, like I said, is my helper. He, when I'm doing something, he'll tell me, no, sir, stop, stop now. He advise, the Spirit of God is my advice, he'll advise me, he's my counselor, he's my counselor. He said, no, don't, 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 don't answer that one. Keep, keep, hold your peace. He, he will minister, you will tell, you will tell that he's helping me now. Hmm. You tell that he's helping you now. Am I, am I audible? Okay, my speaker.
Yeah, but you're struggling to hear, you are, don't know you are going down like, down this scratch, scratch, I don't know what's going on now.
Uh huh, uh huh, uh huh. Am I?
Whether it's my phone or what.
But Joe does not have an iPhone, so he's got beef. He's, he's got one of those phones that touch to show my hands, I've got those. Um, I, just in case you have one, I'm not gonna mention it, but he doesn't have an iPhone is the problem here, that's why he would. Am I audible now? Is, is it, is it a, is it your speaker problem or is it my phone? Are we good?
No, 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 I can, I can hear you, I can, I can hear you now.
No, I. I'm clear, mate. Okay, ble- bless the Lord, bless the, it's, it, Kathy, it's this iPhoneless people, you know, Poojo and that shop, ah. Prophet B has got the iPhone, so me and him are, just these other ones that, you know. May the Lord help you in the name of Jesus. Speaking against iPhones here. Okay, I've stopped, I've stopped. Don't make me, don't make me go down other routes now. Can I come back?
Amen.
But just say, amen. Forgive me, children of God, I began to walk around the room when I was ministering, so I'm sure my phone was scratching against the tablet. I'm using the tablet for, for, for ministering. Please forgive me. I, 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 I normally would walk around the room when I'm teaching the word. So I think I have to stay in the same place today. Um, I normally use my phone and not the tablet, but today I was using the tablet, so I think next time I'll just go back to my phone. Okay. Please forgive me, forgive me for that. I profusely apologize. So I was in verse eleven. I was talking about the advantage of having the Spirit of God, and I said that the Spirit of God is my counselor. The Spirit of God is my strength. The Spirit of God is my help. Never neglect the help of the Spirit of God. Never ever neglect the assistance of the Spirit of God. It is, it, 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 it is dangerous for you to be walking around without the Spirit of God on your side. In fact, every believer must make it a mandate that, that, that they have got fellowship, that they've got relationship. That they have got eh, that they've got eh, eh common standing with the spirit that guides them. If you're going to walk around without the influence of the Spirit of God, child of God, you're going to find yourself victim to people that know about their spirits. So there are people that are walking under immense influence of the spirits that they serve. There are people that are moving around under immense influence, that immensely influenced by the spirits that they serve. Which spirit, child of God, do you serve? Which spirit, child of God, are you moving with? So some people wanna be pretty. And so, they'll begin to subscribe now to, to anything that has got to do with outward apparel. And if you do not, if you're not aware of the influence, that's, if you do not know why you're in a place, you find yourself misaligned. You will not be focused with why you're in a place, you begin to follow what it is that they are doing. You forget why you are there, because there's an influence about the spirit that, that possesses them. And so this spirit will begin to possess even you, because you're not connected to the Spirit of God. You begin to lose foresight of the reason that you're in a particular place, and you now also forget where you're coming from. You begin to look at your face also, you know? I must, I must consider myself, you know, this and that, this and that, because you have moved away from the influence. Let me push a bit further. You go into a place, they are crooked people, they're doing things that are wrong. You know why you are there. You know how difficult it was for you to get there. Now you're here. What spirit is going to influence you? Are you now going to get to home and sit down and do nothing? Are you going to forget the main reason you are there? You will. If you are not properly rooted, if the inner word parts do not carry wisdom. If your heart is not being cleaned, that you don't have a right spirit, and you're moved from the presence of God, you're gonna find another spirit is coming to begin to influence you. And you'll do whatever they do in Egypt, you do whatever they do in that place, and you forget how it is that you got there. I cannot afford, child of God, to have ministered, to have prayed for this long, ministered this hard. For me to come and be influenced by people that say this and that, this and that. I will not be influenced, because there's an influence on my life. That refuses for me to go down certain roads. So there are roads that I will not go down. There are things that I will not say, not because I am better than you, but because there's a spirit that influences me, and it's called the Holy Spirit of God. So anything that does not fall within, with, within the capacity of holiness, you're not gonna find me. If you find me, it's because I'm there to minister. Is somebody with me? Is somebody with me? I hope we're together.
Amen.
Okay. So it's, 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 it's not anything.
Amen.
It's not amen, it's not anything against anybody, it's not anything against anybody. It's not anything against, no, no, it's not anything against anybody. Next, next week, I'm going to push my, I'm going to push the agenda a bit further. Next week, I'm, I'm gonna directly touch about the spirit that comforts. The spirit that teaches truth, I'm gonna go to the book of John. John, John gives quite a, a good teaching about the Holy Spirit, gives a. Well, next week, I'm going to go to the book of John. John will help us, John will give us clarity about the spirit that helps. The spirit that guides and the spirit that gives wisdom. I'm gonna spend quite a lot of time there, in, in maybe five or six scriptures, that are going to help us learn more about the fellowship of the Holy Spirit, very, very important. So the spirit, so that the Holy Spirit is not some abstract feature of being, of being a believer. So to many, the Holy Spirit is very abstract, can't really put, um, can't really put. A or B together when it comes to the spirit of God, simply because it's immensely abstract. So to remove that abstractness, we're going to need to construct it by reason of scripture, and the scripture really, really helps us. And the first thing that we need to learn is that we must not lose the Holy Spirit. We must not be removed away from the presence of the Holy Spirit. Hmm, it, it, it must, it must be a mandate. That each and every one of us have got fellowship with the Spirit of God. Very, very important. That influence of the spirit firstly must be right. It can't be a spirit that suits how you feel. It must be a spirit of holiness. It can be a spirit that supports what's on your mind. It must be a spirit of holiness. It must be a spirit of holiness. What does holiness demand on you? Holiness does not demand on the basis of the mood that you're in, you know? I feel love, you know, I don't feel love, you know, I feel okay. No, that's not holiness. Holiness is on the basis of what it is that God is saying. That's holiness. Very, very important, that you learn that the presence of God is, 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 is now the atmosphere that we're in. And the Holy Spirit now governs the presence that we're in. The presence of God is the atmosphere that we're in. And the Spirit of God now begins to govern that atmosphere. So it's not the presence of God that I'm in and anything can happen, scatter, platter, no. It's the presence of God, and then the Spirit of God now be, the Spirit of God is now the, is the governor. Is the ruler of that presence that is the presence of God. Hence, I say, yeah, fall down, chilled, I get it. Sometimes you'll be overwhelmed, but that's not the basis on a day to day. And I'm not saying that people do not fall down in the presence, no, this is not what I'm saying. Some people will fall down in the presence of the Holy Spirit, they will, I can't lie to you, they will, they will. But that cannot be the beginning and the ending experiential factor of what the Spirit of God looks like. It really can't be. It really can't be. I even dare to say, children of God, I even dare. Most, most of these things that were seen as the Holy Spirit is not the Holy Spirit. It's just very disrespectful young men. That are taking advantage of these ladies that really want something to happen, to be very, very honest with you. To be very, very frank and clear with you, most of the majority of things that are happening are not the Spirit of God. It's a lot of games. It's children that have been given toys and have learnt how to use the toys. It's very dangerous. It's a cause for stagnation, very, very dangerous. On the feet that we stand, in the place that we stand, before the Holy God that we stand. Some of these things are gonna be found to be wanting. They're gonna be found that they lack sincerity to the things of God. And so the Holy Spirit is now that measurement that helps us find sincerity in the presence of God. Okay, let me, let me put it together well, so that it's not too far from where it is that I wanted you to go to. Here's where I wanted you to go to. So, create in me a clean heart, oh God, renew a right spirit within me. Cast me not away from your presence, oh God, and take not your Holy Spirit away from me. This right here facilitates the mind of the believer when it comes to a relationship with God. Clean heart, right spirit, the presence of God and the Holy Spirit. Clean heart is now the house, the temple, your body becomes the temple of the Holy Spirit. The influence that influences you cannot be on the outside. This will cause now the presence of God to be wherever you are, and so the Holy Spirit will begin to govern you well. I repeat it again. A clean heart, very important, very, very important. A right spirit, crucial, very, very crucial. The presence, his atmosphere. The, 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 the move of God is governed now by the presence of God. Now, the, now the Bible teaches us that them that are led of the Spirit of God are the sons of God. Because of that leading of the Spirit of God, you can now begin to be called a son of God. Without the leading of the Spirit, we fail to be called sons of God. We now become, we now become the sons of the masters that we serve. I take you back to Mama Eve. Mama Eve eats of the, of the apple or whatever it was, right? Pea, I don't know, banana. And when she eats of that fruit, right, the Bible now tells us that now she begins to suffer the thing called death. On the day that the Lord began to walk in the garden, going, going towards them, they looked at themselves. And they began to view themselves a little bit differently than they did before. So before, the Bible tells us that they would often have fellowship, they would often meet in the cool of the day with God. Apparently, when they meet with God, they were not dressed. On this day, when God is to come, they looked at their bodies, they looked at themselves, and they began to understand what shame was. And they looked, and now, because sin causes for you to be, causes, causes for, causes for your outward apparel to be condemned. They looked at their bodies, they looked at themselves, and they could not stand themselves. And so the Bible says they ran into the bushes. And began to sew themselves apron. Learn the mystery. As they were sewing themselves aprons. The feeling that they were having was not necessarily a pain on the outside. The feeling they were having was coming from the inside, but because they could not help the inside, there's a clean heart. Because they could not help the inside, they began to cover up on the outside. And so as they were covering up on the outside, it was now to be found that they had put an apron on themselves, an apron of fig leaves. And so when God was walking in the, in the cool of the deep, in the cool of the evening, in the garden, he asked, Adam, Adam, where are you? Where are you? Because often Adam would come to God and have this fellowship, but now they're not having this fellowship, Adam is now covered up. Adam is now made up. It's not the Adam that God knew. It's a different Adam. This is the Adam that's been made up with, with fig trees, he's now covered himself. He's trying to hide what is on the inside of the heart. He's trying to cover what's going on inside of that. Meanwhile, God is not interested with your outside, my dear. God is not interested with the outfit that you're wearing. God has always been looking at the heart. God is not interested with how well you cover up. God is looking at the condition of the heart. And so when God looks clearly at Adam, he's seeing the inside of Adam, God is not considering the apron that they have worn. So the outfit that you wear to church, God does not consider. God looks at your heart every single day. God measures the heart every single day, child of God. Every single day. And so Adam, the Bible says that Adam and, and Mama Eve, them they've covered up their bodies. Hmm, they've covered up their bodies. Listen very carefully. After covering up their bodies, it was now found that God looked at them. And God asked them, God asked them a very important question. Who did you talk to? What did you hear? What is, what is this conversation you have been having? Because God knows there's another influence and it is not his influence anymore. It is not his influence anymore. There's another influence at work, child of God. There's another influence at work. There's another influence at work. There's another, thi- this is why you find that you're depressed, there's another influence at work. You're not good enough, there's another influence at work, another influence at work. So some, s- some are gonna, some are gonna, some are gonna try to make up by, I always make the example of eating ice cream, because that's how I used to detox. How, how I used to deal with my depression, eat a lot of ice cream. It never really worked though, eh? Hammer the ice cream, right? Hammer the ice cream, hammer the ice cream, hammer the ice cream. There's something wrong on the inside, but I'm dealing with it from the outside. And I use ice cream, by the way, as a metaphor. May the Lord give you understanding, right? Hammer it, hammer it, hammer it. Eh 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 eh, and it was found at the end of the day that the thing on the inside was not fixed. But the boys could not see clearly, they could not see clearly. I could not see clearly. The, the thing, the thing would disappear for a second. For a second, I'm not thinking about it, I'll be in different places. Hmm, my mind would have traveled. Amen, somebody. I hope we're still together, oh, I hope I didn't lose anybody.
Amen.
Sorry, y'all, we, we have, we have to, we have to be real out on these streets, we can't be lying to each other, we have to be on the real, amen, may the Lord help us.
Amen.
Okay. Hmm. Eh 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 eh, and, and so, child of God, that apron does not have the ability to cover or to help where the remedy is needed. That's the wrong panado. That's the wrong grandpa, it's not the right grandpa. It's a different one that you are now using. Adam, that's not, that's, that's not, that's not where the mistake was done. The mistake was not done on your outside, why are you covering up your outside? That's not where the mistake was done. The mistake was done on the inside. There was another influence that began to influence Adam and Mama Eve. Now Mama Eve has been found to have sinned before God, it was a different spirit that spoke. Eh, you, you know the problem of, the problem with this spirit that I don't like about Lu- uh, Braloo? After Lucifer is done, Lucifer now leaves, Lucifer is gone. It's not, when God, when God is talking to Adam. God is, Adam is now blaming, it's the wife, it's the wife, it's the wife that you gave me. It's the wife that you gave me. Oh God, it's the wife that you gave me, that caused me to do this. I'm not pointing at you, babe, my wife is asking, I'm not pointing at you, I never point at you. I'm not pointing, my wife is asking, am I pointing at you? Am I pointing at her? I'm sorry. And, and so he's pointing, he says, it's the wife that you gave me. Ah, Adam, Adam is still pointing fingers, he, he knew, the word came to him, and the word was that, sir, do not eat of that tree. Hmm. A clean heart, a right spirit. And, and now, loo- look at what, look at what happens to Adam after he eats of the tree. Now the heart is compromised, he's now dressed in the outside. After he's seen, the Bible now teaches us that they were removed out of the presence of God. In fact, before they were even removed out of the presence of God, they themselves elected to be removed. From the, they ran away from the presence of the Lord God. Sin will evict you from the presence of the Lord God. Sin will voluntarily move you away from the presence of the, you're gonna know by the sin that you do. Sin will cause, when they begin to pray here, even you will know, ah, ah, not today with, I'll come, I will need a time. You know, I need some time just to adjust myself, so when I come back, at least I would have swallowed what I did. Sin will evict you. Don't play with sin here. Sin will evict, in that time, there's, 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 there's breakthrough that was supposed to come. And you needed the grace, you needed the grace to help you jump into that breakthrough. And now because of that sin that we were playing around with, we find that we missed out on the opportunity for grace. We missed out on the advantage of favor, and you didn't even know it, because sin closed our eyes, our tummy were full, maybe with banana, apple, I don't know what they ate. Avocado, I sure hoped it wasn't avocado, but they ate something, right? And now because they are full, they can't quite see, they can't, they can't quite see what they were going to receive in the presence of the Lord God. All they're considering now is the outfit that they are wearing. The outfit that they're wearing is very important to them. Now they're fully covered up. And God is not looking at the outside, God is looking at the inside. Clean heart, right spirit. Now, now, now because of, because of that atmosphere. You find that they are unable to be, they are unable to be in the presence of God, and so it was found, children of God, that they were evicted, they were now removed. Even a sword was placed in front of the tree, they can no longer eat in them, they can no longer eat of the tree of life. They can no longer, because they do not know the word of God. They know another word. They have now been accustomed to another kind of spirit, very dangerous, very, very dangerous, very, very dangerous.